A spotlight, do we have a spotlight?
We do.
Okay.
We do, thank you, Mr. Lyons.
We're to Ms. Keyes.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our spotlight section of our agenda for tonight, Tuesday, March 14th, 2016. Tonight was a very special spotlight, actually that we had prior to the meeting. We had a remembrance for Bruce Millian. We had wonderful words of praise by our mayor, Dr. Adamowski, as well as our own fellow board member, Mike Barbous. We'd like to now take a moment to remember Bruce. As most of you know, Bruce was the longtime president of the Norwalk Federation of Teachers, who unexpectedly passed away last fall. He had a degree in industrial arts. Bruce spent more than thirty years teaching classes at Bryan McMahon High School. He retired from teaching to become the full-time president of the Norwalk Federation of Teachers. It's a position he had for fifteen years. In that role, he became one of the longest-serving teacher-union leaders in the state of Connecticut. We also have a beautiful bench, that's a remembrance, and we dedicated it right outside this building, outside this room. Over the years, Bruce had many a conversation on that bench, including many talks with teachers, other union leaders, many superintendents, Board of Education members, the media, and countless others. As many on the board can attest, Bruce was known as a tough, tough negotiator. I know Mr. Lyons and Mr. Barbous understand that as well.
I confirm that.
Exactly, who represented his membership with pride. But at the same time, he was a loyal friend, a dedicated mentor, a strong, strong advocate for education. He loved Norwalk, and his commitment to our students and schools were always clear and vivid. All of us here on the board, and I'm sure many of us in the audience are saddened to hear Bruce's passing in September, but his legacy on education will always continue to live on. We are pleased, as a board, tonight to honor his memory today, and we all will think of him fondly each time one of us sits for a conversation on the bench that's named in his honor. Now, I have a kind of a funny story to share. He was a big part, all the years I've been on policy, I know Artic Semis has been on policy for many years as well, and Bruce was a fixture at policy. For years, he would sit directly across from me, and as chair, the past few years, if I wasn't moving the policy committee forward quick enough for him, just look at his watch, and just look at me and look at his watch. So he wanted to make sure we were on task and we were moving along. But again, I'm thrilled that we were able to have this memory and this remembrance for him. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the public comment section of the agenda. Mr. Barbous.
Good evening. Our first speaker will be Mary Jordan.
Thank you for the kind words regarding Bruce's memory and legacy. I would like to address the budget. The word is starting to trickle out about what things will look alike next year in this district, in the schools. And although the talk up till now has been about theories of action, of management empowerment, and the shared decision-making of school governance councils, the reality today is that, for the most part, decisions about the cuts in our school budgets and the directions of our schools are being made behind closed doors at central office and in buildings. Interview committees are being replaced by one-person decisions about whom to hire. Information generally is vague and scarce. School personnel are being called upon next year to do much more with much less. We will have fewer paraprofessionals, larger class sizes, and reduced faith in our own personal futures in the district. We don't see plans, any plans, taking shape for hiring the new special education teachers that have been talked about, but we continue to hear talk about how special education aides will need to be cut. We have seen new hires in programs struggle and be let go instead of being provided meaningful support. And the new culture settling in of warning letters placed in personnel files. Wonder who's next? If it will be me next, is what teachers are thinking. This is management through fear. The board has discussed renovations as new, compared it to basic capitals and repairs, but the reality is that next year, we will be with bigger classes of children stuffed into the same increasingly decrepit buildings with no relief in sight. We are not riding a high tide with a new vision of high achievement here. We are staggering at the prospect of losing our jobs and doing more with less in the same old buildings with fewer teachers and fewer parents, more students than ever, including very needy sisters and brothers brought back from outplacement. Let me be clear that we teachers care more about supporting our students than anything else, and that was a clear part of Bruce's legacy. He wasn't only about teacher jobs, and neither are, and that continues with the NFT. We really care about student education and this city. The entire district is in upheaval, and morale is low. The challenge before us is enormous. It requires skillful collaboration, and there's been precious little of that. We welcome what now exists, and we hope to nurture even more collaboration as we move forward. Managed empowerment increasingly feels to us like Dr. Adamowski has the power, and he's just beginning to share. Our students will pay the highest price. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joseph Giandurko.
Good evening. Thank you for the nice, kind words about Bruce. He was a very good mentor to me, but let me talk to you tonight, that's the real reason I'm here. And over the past several months, a narrative has been established and disseminated about the middle school program. I'm here to speak on behalf of the middle school teachers and the work that we do. Despite the picture that has been presented by some, middle school teachers do not waste time. We are engaged with our students as they begin to discover themselves academically and emotionally. The middle school years are often times when the student needs the strongest advocate and the strongest support system. We are required to conduct SRBI meetings, progress monitoring notes on all students, parent-student-teacher conferences, and team meetings to determine the needs and concerns of our various students. Middle school teachers are also engaged in the PPIS process to review the status and climate of the team and the school. This is time used wisely, not wasted. The incremental but steady implementation of a strategic plan developed in the fall but just recently released and made public appears to function more as a corporate restructuring rather than a plan developed in conjunction with all the stakeholders. There is hope in the union that, as Dr. Adamowski learned and engaged with Norwalk, plans would have been adopted to better match the needs of our district. This adaptation is clearly not evident, and the authoritizing style deters learning about this district. The cuts being proposed in the framework of Dr. Daggett's theories outlined for our middle school level do not serve the best needs or interests of our students. We are concerned that these changes will lead to chaos, uneven and inequitable schools, and we will not ever be at a point to regain this equilibrium. Yes, it can be stated that the stakeholders of Norwalk have been informed of these radical changes and given the opportunity to provide input, but was our input even listened to? It's very hard to say. There has been no single plan, and there has been no evidence of our input being used. School-based budgets are being worked out now for the middle school next year in advance of the redesign. This is before there are school-based committees or school governance councils empowered to give their input. The budget decisions are being made behind closed doors, and in light of these cuts will result in radical change. We are in the dark about decisions that affect our schools, students, and careers. Rumors, half-truths, and incomplete plans are creating an environment where the schools are bracing to suffer the loss of talented teachers and are left to wonder how in the world we will still be able to deliver quality education to our students. I'm speaking to the board tonight as I implore its members, Dr. Adamowski, and other cabinet members in the audience, to engage the NFT and all other stakeholders in a meaningful dialogue that is productive and respectful. Our conversations should progress and develop into a respectful exchange of ideas and concerns, not a chaotic chum of personnel designed to create a meaningful, excuse me, with the design to create a meaningful improvement to our students' achievement levels. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tony Williams.
Here's a handout from the board. I just want to take a moment and make sure you guys have the handout of our MTR quick fact sheet before I start. Thanks.
Well, got it. Go ahead.
Good evening, Superintendent Adamowski, and distinguished members of the Norwalk Board of Education. I thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you on a very important issue. My name is Tony Williams, and I'm a community organizer for Connecticut Coalition for Achievement Now, resident of Norwalk, and a graduate of Norwalk Public Schools. But most importantly, I am an advocate for education quality and excellence that believes every child has limitless capacity to succeed, and that we should have schools that reflect this radical belief, framed by the belief that parents have limitless capacity to do good in community, become community leaders, and rise as quality education champions for their children. As an advocate focused on many ways to empower parents, I'm constantly concerned with the level of quality of education Connecticut children are receiving, and for me, I know that a great education must definitely start at the front of the classroom. I recently had a conversation with a parent last week describing how her son was great, how her son has great dedicated educators in his school. They keep the parents informed with their child's progress, where improvement is needed, and most importantly, how the parents can play a part in giving their child the best possible educational experience possible. While the parent's child has a, as a teacher, that undoubtedly keeps him top of the mind, I know far too many of Connecticut students need, I know far too many of Connecticut students don't have a teacher like this parent of the Norwalk Public Schools that has an attentive teacher and present in keeping her involved. We must do more to ensure the experience the student has with their teacher is a reality for every student in Connecticut. It is because of this that I share a statement today in favor of SB 379, an act concerning the recommendations of the Minority Teacher Recruitment Task Force, because it will help make the vision become a reality. I think everyone here agrees that every child in Connecticut, regardless of the color of their skin or what neighborhood they live in, should be taught by an effective educator that cares about their future. Our students of color, who are disproportionately affected by teacher shortages and teacher retention difficulties in our most vulnerable districts and schools, need our state's leaders to do more so they can have the best possible teacher leading them to dream bigger, think critically, and imagine greater. In that vein, we need to ensure our students of color have role models in their schools in which they can see themselves. This is critical to inspiring all students, who may find positive role models and leadership rare. We know that students of color, when taught by teachers of color, perform better in the classroom. And I could definitely argue that increased diversity in the classroom benefits all children, regardless of background, skin color, or where a student may be from. The Joint Committee on Education, of which I spent twelve hours last Monday organizing folks to testify, and Representative Morris, as well as Pastor Curtis from Grace Baptist Church, were a part of that enduring long time to wait, but they were present. I was grateful to be a part of the Norwalk community leaders testifying. The Joint Committee on Education has done a great job in the past in trying to bring greater diversity into the classroom. Just last year, members of that committee showed great leadership in passing legislation that sought to improve the recruitment and retention of teachers and principals of color. I ask that you support SB 379, the Minority Teacher Recruitment Bill, and contact members of the Norwalk delegation, and ask that they continue this work.
Tony, sorry.
Thank you. It's important work for all of our kids, and encourage you to, as a local elected official, to call our state elected officials, to let them know how important this is. Thanks for your time.
And that's all of our public speakers.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. All right, next item is Chair's Report on Budget Status. I wanted to say a few things about where we are on our various budgets. There's been a lot of meetings, a lot of press coverage on this. There are, there are three components of our budget that we're working on right now. One is the base operating budget, one is the capital budget, and then one is the special appropriation that we requested for reconstruction of the special education function in the city. You know, when we originally talked about our budget, Dr. Adamowski had said that he really would have needed about a 5% increase to be able to do everything that he wanted to do, to keep every employee employed and to add all the other programs on. As I think everybody can tell by the way the city has reacted to a 3.9% request, we correctly judged that there was no possibility that the city would fund a 5% request. So we went through the budget ourselves, identified potential areas of savings, and were able to come in at 3.9%. That was submitted to the city. The city requested us to cut 1.5 million out of that request by reducing the normal-sized payment that we would put into our insurance reserve. We agreed to do that with what we thought was an agreement on the final numbers on the budget, and we're all done, and everybody can go home. And then a couple of days later, we read that the Finance Director had recommended another $600,000 cut from our budget. We have been talking to the mayor, talking to the council president, other members of the council, and they have assured us that they expect that $600,000 to be restored to our operating budget when the process is completed at the Board of Estment Taxation. We certainly hope that will be the case. The capital budget, as you know, we've also had a bumpy road on that one. We put in a $3 million request as part of our capital budget to allow us to begin work on the ten-year facilities improvement plan, which has gotten a lot of, a lot of meetings, a lot of press coverage. As you may recall, the Planning Commission decided to eliminate all of that funding from the capital budget at their first level of review. The mayor has, at his level of review, has restored that $3 million to the capital budget. So we, assuming that the common council backs up the mayor, which I expect they will, that budget will be in place. That $3 million, of course, was essential for us to make any progress at all towards the implementation of a long-term facilities plan. And we were somewhat taken aback by the Planning Commission, but I'm pleased that the mayor is on our side on this one, and it appears that that will get funded, which will permit us to move forward with that long-term facilities plan. The final element of the budget is probably the most complex one, which was our request for $3.6 million to, you know, special appropriation to allow us to implement fully the recommendations of the CREG report on how to solve the myriad problems in our special education department. We feel that we are well along the way to, we know what we need to do. We have the CREG report, which gives you in great detail the things that need to be corrected. We have a first-years cut at going after the CREG recommendations in the 12-point plan that Dr. Adamowski has proposed. We have created a special education committee of the board chaired by an individual with PhD in special education, who we feel can, can, from a board level, bring a sophisticated approach to the way that we're going to implement these things, while we use the money. And I've analogized this to people about explaining, you know, why do we need this special infusion of money? The metaphor I've used for it is that it's like we're, we're on one side of a mountain chain, the side that's desert, and on the other side of the mountain chain are these verdant valleys, and that's where we want to get. The problem is that to get there, we have to climb over the darn mountain. And to get over the mountain, you need, you know, crampons and all the other climbing equipment, and you need supplies, and you need guides to know the way through the mountains. And if you don't have that, you're stuck in the desert forever. And without a special appropriation like this, we basically just stay stuck in the desert, because we don't have the resources from our regular operating budget to fundamentally change special ed, to create, as Dr. Krevikor has said, you know, the complete spectrum of services that we need in order to provide the least restrictive environment, high-quality education for special education children in our school system, as opposed to shipping them all over the state in outplacements. So Dr. Adamowski came up with a plan. We presented this initially to the mayor, the council president, city finance director in a meeting in December. I think they did a good job in not falling off their chairs when we told them what it was going to cost. But the presentation is based on two things. One is, it's the right thing to do. We're required by law to provide least restrictive environment, high-quality special education, and we should be doing this because it's the right thing to do. But it's also a question of intelligent allocation of resources. Our special ed costs have gone up 50% in the last four years. It's not because the number of special ed students has gone up 50%, it's because we are following an inefficient model of providing services to children that is focused, as Dr. Adamowski has pointed out, on either one-on-one aides or outplacements, which you sort of default to because you don't have that full spectrum of services. If we build the full spectrum of services, which is what the three-year plan is designed to do, we think we can convince parents of special ed kids that they're better off with their children in our schools. That's the plan. Now, there are a couple of different ideas that have been floated about how to fund this. As many of you know, the city's finance director recently proposed that this be done by increasing the spending cap and having a bigger tax increase this year, and then revisiting the whole thing each of the next two years. With all due respect to Mr. Barron, we don't think that's the best way to approach solving this problem. For one thing, I think it's important for people to understand how important it is to rebuild trust in the parents in our ability to actually deliver on this. And part of our pitch to the city is that we would like to set up a special revenue fund, put the entire $3.6 million in it upfront, and then draw that down over the three years. So we're in a position to go to special ed parents and say, this is not a flash in the pan. This isn't something where we got an appropriation this year, but maybe the council will change its mind next year, and we won't get it. If we're going to convince people to take a chance on us, we have to be able to show them that there's some kind of a long-term commitment to getting this done right. And we've, we've got our lawyers working on how to design a special revenue fund so that it would meet the requirements of state law. We have come up with a funding mechanism that we think can virtually eliminate any concerns that the city had about the MBR, the minimum budget requirements, or special ed requirements for maintenance of effort. And we think that we can do this in a manner that is not only less expensive to the taxpayers, in addition to being more confidence-building with special education parents, but is also very fiscally responsible. You know, one of the, in terms of, you know, putting together a plan like this, having been on the Board of Estment Taxation myself for six years, I'm very sensitive to the concerns of the city on not blowing the tax rate through the roof, and among other things, on protecting the city's AAA bond rating. This is something that several mayors have worked to create and then maintain. We're a rare community that maintained AAA rating all the way through the Great Recession, which is a real compliment to the people who worked on that, particularly our own finance director now, Mr. Hamilton, who was doing that for the city during the crisis times. But it's, it's very interesting to look at some of the actual numbers on the city's unassigned reserves. And it's important also to make a legal distinction. You know, we have that insurance reserve fund, and there was a lot of talk about, well, there's $18 million in the insurance reserve fund, why don't you just use that money? Some people accused us of being irresponsible because we had built the reserve up. Well, at the end of the day, when you actually crunch the numbers and you allocate that reserve out to money that we know we have to spend it on, to insurance payments that have to be made, et cetera, it turns out there's actually about $1.3 million free in that account, not 18 million or 14 million. The city's reserve, however, is a truly unallocated reserve. It isn't locked into a particular use, it can be used for anything the city wants to. And as of June 30 of 15, it was at about $42 million. And it's interesting that it had grown during the previous year by about $7.7 million. Over the last five years, the city's fund reserve has grown from $26 million to $42 million, a 60% increase in reserve. In fact, we have the largest fund balance of any municipality in the state of Connecticut. The only one that even comes close is Greenwich, and they're about $7 million behind us. That is a real testament to the financial management of the city, that we've built up the biggest reserve in the state of Connecticut. It is, it currently stands at about 12% of GAAP revenues, which may be the highest ever achieved by the city, and that's on the upper end of the 7.5% to 15% range, which is considered ideal for, for reserves. Now, over the last three years, the average growth in that fund balance has been about $4.6 million per year. And if we were to assume that the city this year, with a recovering economy, with new buildings going up all over town, with, you know, revenues from permits and stuff and whatnot going up, that with all that, the reserve only grew by half of the rate that it's grown for the last few years, that would be about $2.3 million, which is exactly the amount of money that we're asking the city to put in to this special fund for special education. So if that happened, we'd end up, after that appropriation, with the same amount of money in the, in the city's reserve that we have right now, about $42 million. Now, I don't think that that $42 million figure is going to, which, which will be the biggest reserve of any city in the state, is going to bring about any kind of threat to our AAA rating. If we had a AAA rating five years ago, when we had $26 million in the bank, having $42 million in the bank should make us very comfortable with our AAA rating. So we believe that appropriating this money in the manner that we've suggested is fiscally responsible, leaves the city with an enormous reserve, a very safe standing in its AAA financial status, and allows us to climb over that mountain to finally be able to devote the resources that we need to solve the problems of special education. And if we don't do that, and some of you have heard me use this analogy in the past, but I recall, you know, an old TV commercial that used to run 20 years ago for Spam air filters or something for cars, where the commercial would show the guy, you know, fixing somebody's engine who had blown up, and explaining that the guy didn't buy a new air filter or new oil filter, it was an oil filter. And, and the tagline for the commercial was, you know, "Pay me now, or pay me later." You can pay me for the filter, or you can pay me to rebuild your engine. If we don't fix the engine, you know, if we don't put the right filters on the special ed system, and we don't fix the problem, then eventually it's just going to blow up. So we can't stick our head in the, in the sand on this. We have an opportunity to make some dramatic changes here. I will say, the mayor has publicly stated that he supports doing this. The council president has said he supports it. So I don't think there's a question about needing to do it. I don't think there's a question about the magnitude of the funding that's needed to do it. The question is the mechanism to use, and we think that the mechanism of establishing a special fund, putting all the money in it now to create trust on the part of the special ed parents that we're really going to carry this through, in a manner that leaves the city in, in excellent financial condition, is definitely the way that we would like to proceed. And I, you know, I just, commenting briefly on the, on the comments made by Mary Jordan and Joe Giandurko, you know, you're right that, right now, and in the immediate future, we are looking at tight budgets and the same buildings that we've been stuck in for decades. And this is not a situation that's going to be overcome. And this is not a situation that's going to be overcome overnight. You know, a strategic plan for a school system really is going to take five years to implement and 10 or more years in terms of addressing the building issues. And the initial stages of changes like that can be very painful for people and fearful for people. And, you know, part of the reason why people haven't gotten as much communication as they want is that decisions haven't been made on some of these issues yet. We haven't decided everything that's going to go into the budget. We haven't found out for sure whether the city's going to give us the money we want. We've been assured by the mayor that we'll get the $600,000, and Mr. Barron wanted to cut out of our budget, but if we don't have that $600,000, we're probably going to have to lay off enough employees to cover it. We don't want to have to do that. We're hopeful that the mayor will deliver with the board estimate and get us those budget dollars. But until the city has acted on the special ed, special appropriation, and the underlying operating budget, a lot of this is going to remain in flux. And part of the reason why you haven't heard anything is that we don't know what we're going to do yet. So I certainly want to see good collaboration with the union. Ms. Jordan and I have met several times, and we're going to keep meeting. I want to keep that line of communication open. I want to make sure that your points of view are taken into account when these decisions are made. And there is a lot going on, a lot going on. And I know that's imposing pressure on people, particularly the pressure of not knowing what is going to happen. You hear that there's going to be middle school redesign. You don't know what that means. We're not totally sure what that means either. So it's a stressful period that we have to get through, all these budget problems while we're trying to move forward with strategic plans, and also, you know, keeping the buildings open and the lights on in the meantime. And I hope you bear with us somewhat as we try to work our way through this stuff. So that's my report on the budget. Now, over to Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start off with a review of the Connecticut Next Generation Accountability Report for Norwalk, and... (pause) Over here. So you have seen a lot of data in the last few months, starting in the fall, when we reviewed elementary-level data, middle-school level data, high-school data. You saw that in aggregate during your retreat in November, and since that time, you've seen other portions of data provided by others, including Norwalk ACT. So we have been well analyzed in terms of the data we have. And this is really a question of now, you know, what do we do about it? How do we bring about improvements to make our data, in some cases even better, and in other cases, what we would like to see. Our state of Connecticut has issued a Next Generation Accountability System, and this is directly related to the state's obligation under the ESEA waiver. So states who wanted to opt out of No Child Left Behind were allowed a waiver if they met certain conditions. And so our accountability system represents our state's effort in order to meet those other conditions. So, you know, accountability systems serve certain purposes in terms of tracking progress, helping you make improvements, showing where support is needed, recognizing success, and most importantly, promoting transparency, so that we know what to do. Prior to this time, our state accountability system really consisted of what was called a performance index. Excuse me. And the new accountability system is much broader than that. The state has added several new indicators, including some focused on college and career readiness, which I know members of this board care about very much, others on arts and physical fitness. These are intended to underscore the importance of a well-rounded education. And there's an emphasis on growth on state tests, which allows us to acknowledge schools that may be initially low-performing, but have made significant strides to improve their performance and close the achievement gap, particularly among the highest-need students, those students who qualify for free lunch, our English-language learners, and our special education students. And the idea behind all of this is to create a classification measure that basically better describes how schools are doing. So each school now will have an accountability index and a performance index. And so what I'm going to explain to you tonight is our data on the new state accountability index. The performance index will remain the same, and if you look at our results here, and there are copies of this in front of you, and Public Square has the same, you can't read it on the slide, the old performance index really represents A through F of number one. Everything else that has been added, 4, 4B, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, those are all new indicators. Now, this happens to be our report in aggregate. What you can see from it is the same pattern of student achievement that has been reported to you a number of times now. If you look at the performance indicators in number one, almost uniformly, Norwalk students, on average, score below that of the average performance of the students of Connecticut. However, our high-need students do better than average state performance of high-need students. And you'll see that in each of the areas, ELA, math, and science. Now, added to this is a measure of chronic absenteeism. For all students and high-need students, we happen to be doing better than the state in both of those areas, and that's a very good thing. The CCR, that is, those are college board exams, and you see this data mirroring what you have gone over in the past. We have a high number of students taking the tests, and we don't have a high number of students passing the tests, and our rate of passage is about 10 percentage points lower than the state as a whole. On-track graduation rate is higher than the state, although the four-year graduation rate in 2015 was lower. Now, the state has just issued, it's still embargoed, but it has just issued its 2015 graduation rate. And while I cannot discuss it until the embargo is lifted, I can tell you that we have improved. And sometime in April, I'll be in a position to share that data with you, and that will be a cause for some celebration. You'll see post-secondary entrances listed there, physical fitness, and arts access. And I want to say a word, if I could, about arts access. This is an area where I think, which is a strength of ours to begin with, where I think will be even a further strength that we can build upon in the state accountability plan. You'll notice that we are significantly higher than the state in this area to begin with. Some 52.4% of students participate in some arts program in Norwalk versus 45.7% for the state as a whole. The goal here, our target for the future, everyone has a target, no matter how high you are, our target for the future is 60%, but ultimately, the goal of the state accountability plan is for districts to reach 70%. And we may be in a position to be the first district in the state that can reach the 70% level, because it appears that virtually everyone else is lower than us in this area. This has implications, you know, there was some discussion at one point of having an arts academy at Norwalk High School. I think this measure pushes us in a different direction, because, you know, academies by their nature, you know, will enroll 400 students, and it'll be limited, be limited to those students that are particularly interested in the area. The value of the accountability plan here is that all students should have the arts. And we happen to have the same number of students at Bryan McMahon, who are enrolled in arts programs. And so what we want, I think, in school design at the high school level, is to have a high school in which all students are engaged in an arts experience, while they may be pursuing other, more specialized areas and other content areas. But this is a very good thing for us in the accountability plan. So going on, you'll see that we do not, as a district, have a significant achievement gap. Now, it doesn't mean we don't have one. It simply means that compared to the rest of the state, ours is lower. And you remember, in our strategic operating plan, our goal is to have the lowest achievement gap, internal achievement gap of any district in the state of Connecticut, and we have a ways to go to work on that. But no district achievement gaps is such. Now, this is how our schools look on the accountability index. This is a scale of 1 to 100, and those schools that are above 90 are classified as schools of distinction, and we don't happen to have any of those. But we do have a couple of schools that are focus schools, that have gap issues, and then we have one turnaround school. The turnaround schools are the lowest-performing schools in the state. Now, I've, just to tell you how important this gap issue is, I've put checkmarks next to two schools on this list, Cranberry School, which has the highest accountability index at 84.6, and has no gap, or no significant gap. And Kendall, which is our lowest-performing school, at 72.9%, which also does not have a significant gap. Achievement is simply lower performing across the board. If you were to, you know, look at this in layman's terms or very rough estimates, say, you know, what does this mean? Well, about 10 points is a year of growth on this accountability index. And so a 10-point difference separates students in one school from another with about a year of learning. And you'll see the indexes for our other schools. There are a number of schools that have no achievement gap, or have a small one, which is what contributes to our not having one as a district. And you'll see there are three elementary schools, Columbus in ELA in math, Rowatton in math, and Wolf Pit in science, that have gaps between the entire student body and their high-need students that need to be corrected. Let's take a look at our middle schools. I think what is worth looking at here is West Rocks, which is the lowest accountability index at the middle school level, but also has an achievement gap. And, you know, as we look at which schools will require greater intervention and support from the district, these are factors that we need to take into account. Here are our high schools. Bryan McMahon and Norwalk High School are very close in terms of accountability index of 72%, which are both relatively high. There is a, in the graduation measure, there is a graduation gap at Norwalk High School between the highest-need students and all students. That does not exist at Bryan McMahon. And you'll see the Norwalk Pathways Academy at Briggs with an index of 33. That is one of the lowest in the state. I think we simply have to say there that in 2014-15, last year, was not a good year for Briggs. It probably reached its lowest point in its history, and we need to be in a rebuilding and improvement mode going forward, making Briggs more effective. Now, let's talk a minute about the focus and turnaround schools. The two lowest categories of the accountability index are turnaround schools, which are the very lowest in the state, and the focus schools. Focus schools are different. You can be a high-performing school and be a focus school. Focus school simply means that there is an internal gap within the school between high-need students and all of the students in the school. Now, you can see Bryan McMahon is a focus school for math. West Rocks is also a focus school for math, and as I've mentioned, Norwalk Pathways Academy at Briggs is in the turnaround category. So as we look at this data, what does this tell us about the discussions that you've had regarding the SOP, and how we get better, and where we go from here, and how we build an even better school district, how we go from good to great? It's very clear that math is a pressing issue, and there is considerable thought that, you know, in many cases, we just don't teach enough math. I think the middle school is a good example of this. This is a good example of why we need middle schools redesigned, because most middle schools in our state that our students compete against get 90 minutes of math per day, and our children do not. They get an hour. The NWA MAPS assessments become very important in this kind of environment, because this requires the ability to monitor student performance throughout the year and simply not wait for summative results, because the accountability plan has so many other aspects to it. Developing a 25-credit graduation requirement and capstone experience is very important in terms of overall secondary experience, because the SAT, which you did not see tonight, will be added to this at the high school level. SAT measures scope and breadth of program, it's an overall achievement test, and you do better on it the more you're exposed to academically. I mentioned the blended learning model at Briggs to provide for recuperative learning necessary to get a student back on track or graduate when they're way off track. And then, Dr. Connor has talked to you about completing rigorous curriculum design mapping and alignment to Common Core standards in ELA, math, and science, because our smarter balance does measure the Common Core. And then finally, our need, as controversial as it may be, as painful as it may be initially, will be to redesign middle schools to better address adolescent developmental needs and to have schools that are more effective academically. There are some other implications that I would conclude with based upon our initial accountability results. And I just want to reemphasize something that Frank Costanzo talked with you about during the last workshop session, and that would be that our basis for selecting schools for intervention and support in 2016-17 would be based on a triangulation of three factors: the performance data, which we already have in reading, math, and science, the accountability index, which we now have by school, and the school reviews, which Public Square will be helping us with. And the triangulation of those three together will give us a pretty good picture, a very good picture, of which schools need the greatest intervention and support and cannot be ignored in terms of the needs of students. And you saw data from Norwalk ACTs earlier in the year that suggested that, you know, more than half of our lowest-performing students were concentrated in a handful of schools, four or five schools. Math needs to be the top improvement priority of the Norwalk public schools. Every single piece of data, including this accountability data, suggests that and emphasizes that and affirms that. We need to set a goal to have a school of distinction in this accountability index during the course of our three-year strategic operating plan. And I need to inform you also that as a result of the accountability index, we will be required now to use a portion of our Alliance District grant to better support high-need students at the focus schools. In this case, West Rocks, Bryan McMahon, and our turnaround school, Pathway Academy at Briggs. So that has a budgetary implication, because we cannot be spending those funds on other things or less compelling things that might take weight off the general operating budget. But we have to be using those funds to improve schools. Just, let me... Just, let me stop and ask you if you have any questions about any of the data that I've reviewed with you.
Any questions, Dr.?
Thank you, Dr. Adamowski. I just have a couple of points of clarification. When you talked about, for example, on the slide, when you, slide number nine, when you were talking about the graduation rate gap, and you talked about students with the highest need and all other students when they were compared, when they're compared, are the high-need students, in terms of confirmation, they're not included with all the other students, correct?
They actually, no, you're right, they are not.
Okay. And how does the state, because this is your slide, so how does the state compare them? So when they have all students...
I took this off the state.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. Then, something else came to mind. In terms of the schools and building new schools, you had mentioned that a large majority of students who are considered high-need are concentrated in several schools. So, this also goes for the Facilities Committee. So when we're talking about building new schools, we also need to talk about how we're going to support those students and make sure that we don't concentrate all the students that are considered high-needs in several schools. And if that somehow happens, we have to have something in place to make sure that we move away from doing that. Otherwise, we need to inject somehow additional interventions to ensure that these students receive the supports that they need.
I think that's a very, very good point. You know, there are two sides to this coin. You can see from some of the school comparisons that there are schools that have the same, that may have a similar number of high-need students, but one school will have a gap and one will not, right? So, you know, part of this is the instructional program of the school. The other side of the coin, I think, is what you point out. It's the concentration of students in poverty in particular places, and I think we want to try to avoid that to the extent possible. This is one of the reasons why choice schools are so good, and we wish we could have more intra-district magnets, because you tend to get a blending, a natural blending of students without assigning, you know, large numbers of students in terms of one particular starting point in a school when you do, and you basically do it by neighborhood.
I'd just like to add one more point for us to consider when we start thinking about how we're going to support students. For example, when we look at high-need students, or students who are actually considered high-needs, depending on their label, we actually have to look at who they are. So whether or not they're labeled students with disabilities or English-language learners, because those are two different subgroups. Depending on the school, you can have English-language learners, in terms of language proficiency levels, having higher rates of language proficiency. So then, those schools will not be considered in need of additional supports, even though they have a subgroup. And then other schools might have English-language learners with lower English proficiency levels who need additional supports. And the same thing applies to students with disabilities. Depending on the type of category that's in that school will affect achievement outcomes.
And the program. So, I think I pointed out to you last time that the students in the dual-language program at Silvermine were actually doing as well or better than the students that were not. And so, that's a great example of an effective approach, effective program. Just to clarify, the state uses three categories for high-needs. It's English-language learner, you're in special ed, or you qualify for free and reduced lunch. You, as a student, if you are in one or more of those groups, you're in the state high-needs group, and you're compared, you know, for that purpose. I don't want to lose sight of the fact, though, that overall, our high-need students are doing better in Norwalk than they are, on average, in the rest of the state. And I think that's something that we should be proud of. It's a credit to the hard work of many of our staff that are working with these students. And I think it also accounts for why, you know, our teachers are so interested in having tier-two and tier-three interventions to help students, because they see this need and they live with it. And we're, you know, we're doing better at it, and we have a ways to go.
Thank you.
Good. All right, so, to return to our favorite subject, the Strategic Operating Plan, as you know, you reviewed that again last week, and, you know, I mentioned to you that the next couple of months should focus on engaging our stakeholders in the draft of the plan, and then providing an opportunity to gather that information, come back to the board, and make adjustments to the plan before it's adopted, so that we're in a more stable position next year where our staff does know what to expect and what to do, and have had the opportunity to contribute their ideas to it. So, we're backing up on this schedule from June 21st, which is your business meeting in June for approval, because we really have, need to have the plan in place for the next school year. We'd like to use the June workshop for you to review feedback and revisions from the stakeholder groups that have been compiled and make some decisions on adjustments. And then you'll see that largely the months of April and May would be devoted to having these sessions with stakeholder groups. And you'll note that you had suggested meetings at Bryan McMahon High School and Norwalk High School for parents. We'd like to have one at the library, if that's possible as well. Similar to what we, similar to the CREG audit, when we invited special ed teachers to come to a session to review those, I think we did it by level at that time. We'd like to have invitational meetings for any elementary teacher, middle school teacher, high school teacher, to look at the Strategic Operating Plan, but also focus on what are the implications for one's level, the elementary level, middle, high school? What does this mean in terms of change? What do you think about it? And how can we achieve some of these goals? Or is there a different way to achieve them? Or is there a way to adjust, you know, the thinking that has occurred so far? So, that would be the schedule for stakeholder involvement, and this is not to say that there won't be other meetings with other groups, you know, which I and others on our staff would have on an ongoing basis, but it simply means that we would be doing these special things to try to engage more members of the community and staff in focusing on the goals of the plan and strategies, and asking the question of how best we can accomplish this.
Okay, good plan, thank you.
Eric?
Yeah, just one comment. For the Thursday, May 12th meeting, which will be located in South Norwalk, I do believe you just discussed potentially doing the South Norwalk Public Library, or was that in reference to something else? I'm sorry if I missed that.
Well, we had a good meeting at the library. We had a lot of good parent feedback on that. I was hoping we could do that again.
We confirmed today. We did confirm.
But before we do that, the only concern I had on that is I did have some pushback from some parents and folks I spoke with about the parking situation, and that it was a little tough. I mean, I did enjoy our meeting. I thought we had a really great turnout, but I do feel that we did run into a bit of an issue there, and also I know that there were some people that straddled in late when they were trying to find parking. So, just trying to be mindful of ease of access. I know it's in a great location.
Well, the other alternative would be the community center.
South Norwalk Community Center? And the parking isn't much better there either. What about Ely?
Parking's worse there.
You know, I'm not that familiar with Ely.
Nathaniel Ely is also right next to Rudner Court, where I know a lot of families reside. It's where my, the former constituent that sat in this chair, she resides and represents a great deal of that community. So I think that, you know, I think it would be a potential location. Also, it could potentially introduce Ely as we move forward, as potentially considering that site for an expansion and growth in our building study. Just as a point of reference, I love the South Norwalk Public Library, and it was a great space, but maybe looking at another option for that.
All right, so, I'm not sure what the meeting facilities are there, but we'll look into it.
Cool, thank you.
That's a good idea, yes.
I think it's a great idea. The other option, if that doesn't pan out, is to see if we can get free parking across the street, and there's a huge lot across the street, and we've done that in the past. So that's another option. And it's a huge lot, so we can either speak to the parking authority on that.
I think I might know someone on that still.
Well, why don't we take a look at Ely, see if it has the facilities we need and availability? If it does, that's a good option. If it doesn't, then we can go back to the library and see if we could get some kind of arrangement so people, you know, don't have the parking.
Good way to connect with Ely.
All right.
Oh, and then the final aspect of my report involves Tom Hamilton, and you're aware that we are looking at the contractual renewal of our cafeteria management company and system, and there has been feedback regarding quality of meals, and could we do better, and what might be an approach to this, and I think Tom has developed one that we would like you and members of the public to be aware of.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Adamowski. So what I handed out was an addition, an addendum, if you will, that is going to be issued as part of our RFP. As you know, we are out for RFP for Food Management Services, or Food Services Management Company services. Right now, the RFP responses are due back at the end of the month, and as a result of the good work of the district's Wellness Committee, in particular, I want to acknowledge the work of Lisa Linschold, who is with Norwalk Grows, and on the district's Wellness Committee, as well as Teresa Erin Gondesi, I hope I pronounced her last name correctly, with the Norwalk Health Department, have stepped up to the plate and are now very much engaged with our food service department, and with Karen Bartron, our purchasing agent, to address some of the concerns that were raised earlier, and to position the district to make continuous improvements in terms of the quality of the offerings in our food service operation. The committee has agreed to codify the minimum food standards, which I just passed out to you. Most of these food standards, in fact, are already in place with our existing vendor right now, but these standards were not contained in the RFP that went out, so we thought it important to get them codified and included in the RFP. In addition, the committee went through all of the items and made some changes, recommended changes. The items that you see that are highlighted, that are italicized, represent changes. So in this case, you'll see some items, for instance, using locally grown produce, including the Norwalk Public School garden produce was added. You'll see some discussion about organic yogurt. You'll see some discussion about packaged apple slices, in addition to whole fruit as being an option that we want to include. I think most importantly, really, what this represents, though, is some re-engagement of the Wellness Committee and of interested members of the school community in the whole issue of the oversight and management of our food service operation, and I think that's certainly a good thing. So I know that they're talking about a number of options. One of the things that is actively being talked about is the expansion of breakfast options at the schools, and there may be an opportunity to avail ourselves of additional federal funding and provide some additional meal options at breakfast. We're talking about some formal feedback mechanisms from our customers, from our kids, so that we can have better information on what's working well and what needs to be improved. And we're putting in place, really, a process to foster communication between our food service management company and the district going forward, again, so that we can make those changes, those incremental improvements to the quality of the offerings, the healthfulness of the offerings, and the acceptance, and, you know, making sure that our customers are happy with what we're offering. So, that's really the, you know, what we're doing at this point, is taking the opportunity to use the RFP process to sort of re-engage on this issue, and I think, you know, we're moving in a good direction. I think you had a question.
I did, Tom. So, I know the RFP went out sometime February 25th, so does that mean that we've modified it, or how does that work?
Did we send this out as a supplement to the...
Right, this is going to be sent out as an addendum, supplemental information to the RFP, which is very typical. That happens frequently with RFPs.
As long as everybody gets it.
And again, most of these items are things that we're currently, most of these are standards that we're currently doing, so it's not something, you know, completely foreign to where we're at right now, but it's codifying it and putting it into the RFP, and then making those tweaks that we think can be made to it.
When are those bids due, Tom?
It's the end of the month. I don't remember the exact day, but the end of this month.
Arty, and then Heidi. Do we pay a fixed cost, correct, for the vendor to come in and provide food, whether they sell the food or not? How does that work?
Do we want to call up Jim? You want to come up for a minute, and maybe you can answer that question for us? I believe we pay a management fee and then pay expenses, but I'm going to ask him to verify that.
Yeah, the board pays a management fee to the management company. They provide the meals to the students.
Paying for the cost of the food?
It's included, the cost is incurred by the district.
By us, who are paying for the food already?
Right. We're contracting out the management, not the entire operation of food service, so it's not a turnkey operation where we've just outsourced food service in its entirety. We've outsourced the management of the food service operation.
You're hitting on the unique aspect of this, because most districts, when they do outsource, they outsource the entire operation, or they run it themselves with their own cafeteria workers and their own managers. In our case, we employ our own cafeteria workers, but we outsource the management. This has been a traditional approach in Norwalk, which could change, you know, if you felt that you wanted to try something else, but, you know, the assumption has been on the contract renewal that, you know, we would deal only with the renewal of the management company.
Okay, can I follow this a little further?
You can, and again, we're looking for a direction here.
Yeah, so, we're paying for the food.
Yes.
You're charging the kids X amount of money, but you're recouping that money. Does that come back to the district?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, my next question is then, what happens with the food we don't sell? Does it get thrown out?
Whatever doesn't get used and is prepared does get thrown away.
Okay, is there a way that we can feed the local homeless shelters with that food? Since we're already paying for it.
Some of it, you have to be careful, it's a US commodity, USA commodity, you can't just give those away.
That's a waste for us to throw away.
And we have to also be careful in terms of any spoilage or...
Yeah, if you've cooked food and then you ship it across, try to get a bacteria all over.
There's packaged food in there somewhere. I mean, there must be frozen burgers that you're not cooking.
No, they, well, if they're frozen, they haven't been cooked and used yet.
Yes.
What we don't use has already been prepared to be served.
Correct.
So it's only the cooked food.
Only the cooked food.
So there's, do you think there's, would you say, Jim, there's a lot of spoilage, or no?
There's a certain amount of inner waste that comes with preparation. The kids change their mind, kids not being there, and that type of thing. We try to minimize it. We're going to be under review. We use production records to try and only produce what we need. So there is a minimal amount of waste that does spike on certain days or whatever.
Continue, you've got the floor.
Let me just go another direction then. So how much do we get back? How much do we sell?
Well, basically, we were at a bit of a loss last year.
Right, last year, we lost about $85,000. So the operation actually required a subsidy from the district's general fund purchase of $85,000. We have, it was brought to the Finance Committee at their last meeting. I didn't get it on the agenda, but it will be on your next month's agenda for the board. I didn't get it on the agenda, but it will be on your next month's agenda for the board to, a recommendation that the board adjusts the lunch prices effective with next school year.
Okay.
With the intention being that we would like the operation to break even.
Yeah. And Artie, it should have broken even last year.
It should have.
But there was some mathematical formula from...
Which we got from USDA or something.
The formula was...
Really?
And we were given incorrectly, so, and we didn't know.
Yeah, we undercharged them.
It would have broken, it would have broken even were it not for that.
Plus, the management company, anything that they, we make above and beyond comes back to the district. They only get their fee. So whatever is made above and beyond does...
Have we ever made money in a year?
A few years back, we...
A few years back?
Little bit.
Every year, we take a loss, basically.
Basically.
Okay. Anything else?
I got more, but that's all right.
Heidi?
Artie?
A model needs to change, huh?
Do you want to continue?
No, go ahead.
For sure? Okay. Artie brought out some really good points. I know a few years ago, we asked about some items, like non-perishable items, things that we could somehow donate to our local food shelters. And I think this has been an ongoing issue for many years. I mean, food that's just, that's just thrown out. And is there anything that we could, any way we can look at that more closely to see if we could somehow donate?
But again, there's not, there's food, we don't purchase food to be thrown away. Whatever we do purchase gets utilized. In our menus, we menu the items, when we have commodities come in, they get menued. We only order what we need, we don't over-order.
I don't know, any business, though, any restaurant, I've been, I'm Greek, I grew up in diners, so any business that uses, what they buy, they use it right away in the day, I'm sure there's leftovers.
I'm sure there is.
Again, any leftovers, nothing, nothing like that. I assure you.
You guys are good.
We purchase, we'll be delivered twice a week.
He's the recycle coal smoker.
And whatever, whatever does not be used at the elementary level, still frozen and intact, does get utilized at the secondary level.
Can I just add on to that, though? Just going back to this, the minimum food standard's number 15? I mean, just kind of looking ahead at this, are we surveying some of the students, the kids that are actually eating the food, like what they like, what they don't like? I mean, I love the idea of Stonyfield yogurt, you know, something organic and something natural, but have we surveyed our students to see what they're...
That's one of the items specifically that this subcommittee has...
Yeah, that they're looking at.
Said they want to do. They, they want that to be absolutely part of the process, is to survey the kids for that precise reason.
I mean, I...
We have attempted in the past to reach out and have student councils.
Right.
We have actually met with a couple of different schools. We've had councils.
Yes, oh, hey, Lisa?
Sorry. We actually did a, in the health classes at Bryan McMan, last week, we actually surveyed about 200 kids using food boards. And once, we want to, we want to go through proper protocol, and we want to hand that to the industry through the building first before that gets out. It's great idea.
I think it would be very telling to see what kids...
Our food board service member ran through the health, with the health teachers there, so it would be real.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sherelle?
Can someone tell me a little bit more about the dietitian, the role, and if we have a dietitian already?
Whatever vendor is chosen has a dietitian that we can qualify.
It's a requirement that they have to provide to us.
Whoever comes in to run the district. And all, all our nutritionals are on the menu right now as it stands on the website. If you go into their menu, you click on nutritionals to be accessed.
Thank you.
Well done. All right, thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
And Lisa, thanks for all the work you've been doing on this, too.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes superintendent's reports. Thank you all very much. We'll then proceed to the business at hand. First item on the agenda is the consent calendar, which would be items 2A, which is approval of the personnel list, and 2B, which is approval of the budget transfers that are in the package. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. So moved, it's our second, second by Vell. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor, please indicate. Unless you're unanimous, thank you. Next is approval of Alliance District Grant General Improvement, third and final submission. Tom, you want to give us a quick heads up on this one?
Sure, you've seen this twice before, and this is the third and final submission for this year. And we've been advised to get everything in this submission. The grant was originally established as a two-year grant, and we don't know if the grant is going to continue into the second year, so we are planning to submit for the full amount for, in this third submission this year. What we've provided you is the, what are the revised, you've seen most of the items before, except for the items on the last page, which includes additional furniture replacement, some, in the science labs, it includes carpeting and lighting and sound work in the middle school math area, it includes smart board upgrades, replacement furniture, middle school math, it includes gym floor replacement at Briggs and Westrocks Middle School, it includes some kitchen equipment and additional HVAC equipment at HVAC, at the Norwalk High School, some work at the planetarium at Rotten Middle School, and a PA upgrade at several of the schools, as well as some furniture, pre-K furniture and cafeteria tables.
They do that.
Okay.
So those are the adjustments, and we're requesting approval again, so we can get the submission in for March 31st.
Okay. And what's, what's the timing on approval process, and when would the funding be available? Do you know?
It's generally been taking the state a couple of months to get these approved after, after they're submitted.
Okay.
So it would probably be in the, the late spring, that I would expect we'd get approval probably in, in May.
Okay, so then this work would be summer, fall?
Right. But once we have the, the state commitment, the, the funding is, is committed and is available.
Okay. Any questions?
What kind of work we're doing in the planetarium?
You have...
So what we're looking to do in the planetarium is, as we've opened it up, it's very empty, so we need to put in a little acoustic tile and carpet to be able to dampen the sound and in better lighting. So those are the two items.
There is, I know there was, there's a plan to, you know, upgrade the planetarium into more of a science center, along with its planetarium functions. We've been talking about that for a while, and this is part of that process. I'm good, you know, it's good to see, you know, $125,000 pool, structural repairs at the Norwalk High Pool, that needs a lot of work. Much to the amazement of Mr. Meek. Keep having to rotate my... There's a lot of good, good projects in here, and I hope, I hope the state can...
Yeah, it would be nice if the state continues to fund it, because it funds, it's specifically set aside for those types of projects that the state doesn't fund through any other grant program, the school building grant program. So these are the things that frequently get left out of, of construction projects because they wouldn't be eligible for funding.
And these are things that, you know, we, we get, you know, there are concerns to parents, kids, to, you know, I mean locker rooms and things like that. You know, I remember the pictures that there are circulating about the Nathan Hill locker rooms were disasters and everything, and, and they tend not to get the attention that the big capital budget items do, but these are important sort of quality of life things for the schools. Artie?
On a pool in Norwalk High School, I think I mentioned to you that Zeus is looking to help out, maybe.
Yes.
Did you consider that? Have you spoken to them yet?
I have not talked to them.
And they have not contacted you yet?
No, but I'm, we're happy to, I, I indicated we can certainly work with them and accept their donation, I think, happily.
They have something they would like to give.
Yeah, okay.
See, I think, there was an email that went out, they want to make it more of a championship kind of place where they can have championships. And it's not up to that, to par yet because of some modifications that they have to do. So I'll get them to talk to you.
Yeah, definitely talk to them. All right, thank you very much. Chair would therefore entertain a motion to approve the updated Alliance District Grant. Some move, Mr. Chair? Moves, or a second? Sherelle, seconds. Any further discussion? Artie?
No, I'm not, sir.
No? Okay.
I'm just voting.
All in favor? Unanimous, unanimous. All right. Four is approval of the final plans and professional cost estimates for the Norwalk Early Childhood Center. Back to you, Tom.
Yes, this is Phase Two of the Early Childhood Center project. You approved Phase One, I think it was back in December, if I remember correctly, and that project is underway, under construction at this point. Phase Two is the furniture fixture, fixtures and equipment and IT equipment. So that is the second piece of this that is going out to bid shortly. We are due to go up to the State Office of School Construction on March 23rd. They need to approve the, the bid documents before they go out, but one of the things that they ask is that the Board of Education have approved the item that's on your agenda tonight. So we're asking you to find it here. Oh, by the way, this, I didn't copy all of the specs, because I assume you didn't want this much paper, but you do have a copy of the full specs if you want them. So the item on your agenda is to approve final plans and specifications for Phase Two and authorize the Phase Two to be put out to bid.
Okay. Any questions? All right, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the final plans for bid. Eric moves, is there a second? Heidi, seconds? Any further discussion? One question for you, timing-wise, do we look like we're on target with the construction?
Everything I've heard so far is they expect to be on target. We should know more by around the first of April is when they're expected to be done with the remediation work and, and some of the things, if, if there were going to be any hiccups, it would be early in the process. So, but at this point, everything appears to be on target.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to say thanks to the, thanks to staff and everyone for getting this done, and also to Alan Love, who I understand is really our, our champion in driving this thing forward.
Yes.
You know, Alan's done a great job.
You know, I would mention to the board that the, the questions come up a number of times, particularly from our staff, but also from parents, that, you know, what do we do if there is a gap, hopefully a small one, between when school opens and when the Early Childhood Center is, is ready? And having looked at this, the best answer is that we will simply start the preschools as soon as there is a certificate of occupancy for, for the center, rather than try to start them in their old locations and then move them, because those rooms are now spoken for in terms of classrooms that have had to expand and sections that have to be added and other kinds of growth that we're, in enrollment that we're, we're experiencing. So, you know, if we had a few days, if we had a week between, you know, school opening, the center opening, I think we just have to be prepared for that. But it will be, you know, just a, a great thing educationally to have all those, those classes together.
Glad to hear we have contingencies.
Yep.
All right, all in favor of approving the motion, please indicate. And that is unanimous, thank you. All right, next item is approval of HYA Executive Search Services for Chief of Specialized Learning and Student Services. Dr. Adamowski?
So as, as I've explained to the board previously, we have been working with CIRC, the State Education Resource Center, for the last four months on a search for a chief of specialized learning and student services. I think at this point, we, we and they have turned over almost every stone in Connecticut. We've actually gone from six vacancies in this area in the state that can't be filled to nine. So the crisis is worsening in our, in our state. And while we did have a, a number of good candidates, we did not have the right person or the person that was right for Norwalk, given our, our challenges at this point. And, you know, I think we, we have to resist the, the pressure to simply settle and until we can find exactly the right person, given the importance of this position. So I'm recommending tonight that you approve a small agreement with Hazard Young Altea for a national search. Hazard Young Altea was the search firm that hired the Director of Student Services for Dariann a year ago. They were in a similar, the district was in a similar situation in terms of the need for leadership, many of the same issues that we're facing, except on a, on a smaller scale. We've met with the consultant, they, they intend to conduct a confidential search, which means there will only be one candidate before public vetting. And they, they have, their, their experience thus far indicates that in this area, which is what they would describe as the toughest area, they have been successful in having people come from other states who are able to retire in that state and then assume work in a, in another state. And so that's one of the categories of people that they're going after. But this will be, this will be national in scope. Hazard Young Altea relies on a network of hundreds of contacts to identify people and reach out to them, so it's a different kind of, of search from, you know, the, the one that CIRC would, would conduct, it relied primarily on, on getting the word out and advertising and so on. So we're just committed to another go on this. And I think the consultants also feel that we're at a better time of year, because this is the time you would search for someone to start the school year on July 1. And conducting a mid-year search may have also been a detriment to us, to us previously. So we're committed to doing this well and hiring the right person, and I think it's worth taking the additional time and effort to do that.
Okay. All right, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the contract with HYA Executive Search Services for Chief of Specialized Learning. Is there a motion? Vell moves, second, Sherelle seconds. Any discussion?
Just a request that once they have the posting all set, that they send us a copy of it, of the qualifications that they're looking for, for the individual.
Good, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that we couldn't find someone through CIRC, but as, as Dr. Adamowski has pointed out, this is extremely difficult area in which to find qualified people. And if the number of vacancies in Connecticut went up from six to nine while we were searching, there's obviously not a lot of available people in Connecticut. So I, I think this is, this makes sense to broaden it out to a national search. This is one position in particular where we can't settle. We need to get somebody really top-flight into this position. All right.
Just going back to the, to your request, I think Dr. Katty made you aware that the search consultant is meeting with several groups, teachers, fed partners and so on, and that's part of what they're doing, is to develop that profile. So when they're finished, we'll get it to you and the rest of the board.
Thank you. Okay. All right, no other discussion, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the contract, please indicate. That's unanimous, thank you. Next item is approval to offer four kindergarten sections of dual-language program at Silvermine Inter-District Magnet School for 1617. Dr. Adamowski, why don't you put this in context for us?
Well, simply to say that, you know, you're aware that this is our most effective program, and students perform better in this program if they're an English language learner, and it has a great advantage for the English-dominated students that they become biliterate. So it's something we should be doing more of, or as much as we can of, relative to, to student achievement in our growing ELL population. So there have been a number of meetings with parents and staff on this so far. I'm meeting with the PTO, I think it's next week, to talk about this further. You know, this is very limited with kindergarten next year, and we believe, based upon the feedback received, that most Silvermine... And we believe, based upon the feedback received, that most Silvermine families who are eligible to attend the school will opt into the dual language program. And they will have the first preference for it, before we enroll students from outside the area. We are anticipating that there may be a handful of students whose parents may want something else, and so we're in the process now of developing a street directory as to what are the choice those parents would, would have. There is a, an area of a number of streets that are, is very close to the Tracy School, in fact, walking distance to the Tracy School, who, of students who are now being bused to Silvermine, but who could walk to Tracy. So those streets would probably be given the choice of Tracy, and the remaining students, again, we're talking about a small handful, would continue to see, receive transportation but to Cranberry. And Cranberry will be offering another kindergarten session anyway next year, so we think we can, we can cover this well.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Adamaski? Brian then Sherelle.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna support this. I would just like, besides just a kindergartner by himself, or his or herself going in, having an option of opting out, I would be concerned that we're not even giving a higher order of preference to the families with the children already in the school at Silvermine, who are gonna have to pull them, if they just choose to opt out and go to Tracy.
Well, no, they, no, they won't have to, they will age out, because it's one grade per year. So anybody in the regular sections, the two regular sections at Silvermine, they will simply, they will stay in it all the way through.
My, my question, I guess, let me rephrase this, is if somebody has an incoming kindergarten student, and say for example, a third grader, and they say, I don't want my kindergartner in this program, can I dump both kids?
Yes, the answer would be yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, and, and I think it just, for, I'm sorry, I missed, I'm Sherelle, I'm sorry. Back to Sherelle.
Just a quick question. There, they may choose between Cranberry and Tracy, and both of them are sort of on opposite ends of performance spectrums. Do you think that any, did you take into consideration how that might play out?
Well, they're, no, they wouldn't choose.
It just depends on where they live.
It depends on where you live. If you can walk to Tracy, that, those streets would be assigned to Tracy as a choice, you know, in addition to the other inter-district magnets. And if you were in Silvermine and you were being bused currently, then you'd be eligible to go to Cranberry. Again, you know, we're talking about, you know, a very small group of students here, but we, you know, we'll, we'll get some experience with this the first year, and we'll know better. But I think what we're looking at is a, is a situation where parents will vie to get into the dual language program.
Okay. All right, so, and, and I point out just that both of, both items six and seven are somewhat driven by the need to deal with class assignments for next year, lotteries, things of this sort that require some kind of action. They are first steps towards full dual language at Silvermine and a K-8 at Columbus. And this, this allows this process to happen in a gradual way, rather than, you know, an all at once, you know, conversion of the schools. Heidi?
I just want to add one comment. I think I mentioned this, Dr. Adamaski, during our last meeting. I'm definitely full support of this program, the dual language program, and continuing what we have, full immersion on this. But the only concern I have is the middle school portion of it, when these kids are, you know, through fifth grade and then they're moving on to middle school. And I would just hate to see them lose the skills that they had, K through eighth, in a bi, you know, dual language, dual language program, once they hit sixth grade.
And that's a very good point. I, I think I answered that by saying that most dual language programs in the country are K-8, and the reason for that is to connect to higher level language classes in the high school. So eight years from now, another superintendent, another board is, is going to need to, well, maybe not another board, but is going to need to ensure that, that program is developed at at least one of the middle schools, so that students can continue in it.
All right, so Chair would entertain a motion to approve offering four kindergarten sections dual language at Silvermine for 1617. Eric moves, is there a second? Heidi seconds. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, please indicate. Unanimous, thank you. And then the last item is the two kindergarten sections at Columbus. Can you explain, you know, how this is gonna work at Columbus, this, this transition process? Because we've talked about it, but...
Yes, and, you know, there's been discussion with parents on this. I've had several discussions recently with the principal, including one today. The plan would be to simply enroll two kindergarten sessions, which is gonna leave one room remaining.
Right, normally we would do three.
If you, if you followed the K-five pattern, you would do three. And then the following year, the same would occur. And that year in seventeen eighteen, it would allow two sections of fifth grade to move to sixth. And there, I, I'm not in a position to get into the details of this, because you would have to see it on a chart, but one of the objectives of the school is to have greater fidelity to the Bank Street model. The Bank Street model is multi-age. It's actually pairs of ages, you know, six-sevens, seven-eights, that stay together for, for two years. And then, you know, the question is, what does that look like in the, in the middle grades? Which, you know, I think there's a clear idea of it, but, you know, we have to, we have to look at it in terms of how do you, how do you utilize the, the rooms for that? It does require the same amount of rooms. Now, I think I did mention to you that we need eighteen classrooms to make this work over the course of the next, again, nine years, right, in this case? And one option is to bring a portable into the classroom, the portable is near make now, but the better option, which we're gonna be exploring, would be to rehab, there is a, a classroom in the basement that was used at one point. And, you know, there was some thinking on the part of the staff that that would make an excellent art room. So we're gonna look at what, what would it take to, you know, meet current codes and, and bring that up to current standards to be used as an art room? And if we could do that, that would probably be more preferable than the portable.
Okay. Any other questions? Comment? Okay, Chair would... Pardon me, say it.
To your right.
What'd I miss? Heidi? Left front.
We also have Mr. Thomas here from Columbus, and we have Sue, right? Sue's here tonight. One thing I wanted to mention, Columbus, I think this has been a long time coming, as far as moving this up a K through eighth, and I think, I know that we have a lot of parents that are really happy that we're doing this. I realize the space is tight, but I think utilizing the basement, adding another classroom will make a huge difference, and also having that seamless transition from elementary school to middle school, Bank Street program housed in the same location. So I think it's a great way of doing that.
Okay, so Chair would entertain a motion to approve offering two kindergarten sections Columbus Inter-District Magnet School for 1617, in anticipation of further planning for K-8 school. Eric moves, second. Navel, any further discussion?
I will just comment that I'm really glad that we're, we're able to do this. I know the school has wanted to do it for a long time. And this is, you know, sort of the first concrete step towards K-8 school models in Norwalk. You know, our, our facilities master plan calls for having a couple of other K-8 schools, but this is the first concrete step towards doing that, and I'm, I'm really pleased to see us able to, to move forward with this.
Arty, just a quick question, what if the K-8 does not work out for Columbus, are we still okay with these two classes, with what we're doing tonight?
What do you mean, if it doesn't work out?
If it just falls apart? Or if we don't go K-8?
Well, we're kinda going to.
But there's no finalized plan or anything?
Well, this is why you have a strategic operating plan. And so each year in the strategic operating plan, this strategy would be supported by a number of implementation steps. Now, you know, every year, in the summer at your retreat, you'd be looking at this and looking at what the next steps are and how we, we do this. There would be certainly feedback on student achievement, and, you know, feedback on whether or not parents are enrolling in the school and choosing it and so on. So I think we'll, you know, we'll have, we'll have lots of data to know if things are going well or not, as we would with, with any school. As we do with our middle schools now. And, you know, I think the, the objective here is to have, you know, a better, higher performing alternative model.
Okay. All right, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, please indicate. And that is unanimous, thank you. All right, on to information and reports. February 2016 monthly financial report, anything significant to report? Tom?
Okay, well, I guess I just saw you, I think it was a couple weeks ago, so there isn't much new to report, other than I have given you the February, February numbers. So we're sixty-seven percent of the way through the fiscal year, sixty percent of the way through the school year. And as you see on the summary report, we're, we've spent fifty-seven percent of our budget. So we are in good shape overall in terms of where we're at. I'm encouraged at where we are on the wage accounts, at fifty-four percent. We still have the issue on special education that we've talked about. Obviously, that remains the biggest area of concern. All of the other areas that I've identified in here, which I spoke about last month, you know, some issue on substitutes and a few other things, I'm confident we will be able to cover any of those areas of concern from within the existing Board of Education budget. So the only area that, again, we've talked about, special education, which is still on track to the number I, I provided with you, or provided to you a couple weeks ago.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll go on to committee and representative reports. I think I'll start over here this time. Eric, any, any reports for PTOC or Norwalk Acts?
PTOC, no, we have not met since our last meeting. I do believe we are gonna be meeting, I don't have the date, I'm still waiting on confirmation on that actually, so there's some plans in motion there. As far as Norwalk Acts, I, I do have some information to kind of begin to disseminate. As Ralph Ellen C. has started to address and we've discussed briefly, what Norwalk Acts is working on along with Ralph, is creating, funding kind of comparison to work in line with our strategic operating plan to see how Norwalk Acts can help us implement some of these, in much of the same way it's done with many of the programs that exist in Norwalk currently. And as I begin to work more with them on that, it's fascinating for me, because my initial topic that I discussed with them was the, the survey we were discussing two months ago, but really beginning to fully understand the breadth of which they help the children of Norwalk, well beyond what goes inside of our buildings, is really fascinating and looking forward to developing that partnership more, understanding that partnership more, and beginning to help or to understand exactly the extent of what Norwalk Acts does and how they can help us. So more of just kind of a happy, looking forward to giving you more information, because it looks very optimistic, especially from a funding standpoint, as I know that that is a contentious topic these days.
All right, yes, please.
I'm sorry, Eric, can I ask you a question about Norwalk Acts? The survey, I know Mr. Allison was here, do you know where we left off with that?
Yes, as of right now, I, I know that we are going back, well, not we, they are going back to reassess it, working more on how to better implement it, and also being able to work with all of the community partners that were engaged in the process. So, and I think Ralph, if I'm, if I'm addressing that properly, if you wanted to add anything to that, I know.
Yeah, I just wanted to be able to revisit it and stuff.
Okay, 'cause I know there were comments and questions that we had during that meeting, and I wasn't sure where we kind of left off on that.
And from my discussions with Anthony Allison and their new consultant, Sandy Bria, I, I do believe that they are looking to address those, but also even expand the conversation to show what this is planning to do. And as I mentioned in my brief little report there, you know, Norwalk Acts, I think one of the biggest, in my opinion, assets that they bring to the table is, is the funding and their pool of support in that respect. And again, as I begin to understand that more, as we discuss more of what's going on, there are summer programs, that is the next kind of hurdle they're looking at, which is fantastic, which are summer youth programs in a funding capacity, bringing investors into that. I have no details on that, obviously, but these are things that they do. They bring in dollars from investors that are looking for it. You know, we've discussed the Dalio funds before. That is a partnership that they are very tight with, and I do believe that as we begin to explore that again, bringing those funds back to Norwalk, I think the partnership with Norwalk Acts and the, and the relationship they have with the Dalios is going to be integral with making sure that we get the dollars that we can really utilize here in the city.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Mr. Kassamas, curriculum, sports?
Sports.
Five other things, I think.
We had a gentleman here from, yeah, from Brian McMahon, remember the track gentleman? Eric Vander Els. He won the national five thousand meter championship last week in New York City, so.
That's nice. Good news. I saw that paper, that's pretty exciting.
Actually, no, that's Brian McMahon. I used to do finance.
You used to be finance.
I used to do negotiations.
Now you're facility.
Now it's facilities.
You keep moving around on me, I can't remember.
I know, I'm trying to just confuse you. So the facilities, the presentation of the original facilities utilization study has now been complete. It was presented to the committee, it was presented in three parts of the committee, it was then presented to the full board, it has been presented to the planning committee of the common council, and so all, all the rounds have been made. I think the ball is now back in the court of the BOE's Facilities Committee. We have, as a group, had some online discussion. I think we are going to probably meet to come up with a plan of action. I think part of that is we are gonna be requesting some information and some work to be done by central office, and, you know, we probably need to have that meeting and make those requests in very short order. So I'll be setting up a, a date for a meeting soon, and, you know, we'll have something, whatever, we'll, we'll plan our next steps in the next week or two.
Okay. Negotiations and personnel, we are starting up a negotiating process for five different contracts. We had our first meeting with Bill Condon outside council to start going over the custodians' contract. He's also gonna handle the technicians' contract for us. Tom Mooney will be working with us on the nurses, the ESG, executive support group, and what's the other one? Food service. So we're reviewing those contracts now, and, you know, we expect, you know, active negotiations to begin within the next few weeks on the first couple of big ones, and then others to come in over the next few months. Heidi, policy?
Yes, okay, we had...
Busy, busy, busy.
Busy, busy, busy committee. We did have our meeting tonight. We did discuss policy 1211, which is our school governance council. We've had numerous meetings on this, and Dr. Adamaski launched this program, well, not this program, but this policy, we discussed it, started out with our board retreat quite a while ago, and then we moved forward on it. I'm happy to say, we did move forward this evening, approved it through policy, and we will be bringing it to the full board at our next meeting, which will be, I believe, on April 5th, if I'm not mistaken, for discussion. And then on April 19th, we will hopefully approve that, adopt this policy. And then the next step in May is to have our elections for student governance councils, and August, we're looking at hopefully a target date sometime in August for full training of our staff. In addition to that, tonight, we did discuss bylaw 9010, which is limits of authority. We did also approve that, we had a revision on that, we took out the first line stating Board of Ed does not exist between meetings, a minor change in that policy. That original policy was adopted back in 1985, and then was reviewed again, I believe, in 1997, almost twenty years old, so it was time to take a look at that again. And that will be coming back to the full board for discussion, and then action on that on the 19th.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Now to the finance committee.
Yeah, finance is gonna cancel the regularly scheduled meeting on the 23rd, because we have the BET public rating on the budget. So we're rescheduling this tentatively for Monday night, the 21st, at 6:30. I think I have all interested parties signed up for that, and so we'll get an agenda out before the meeting. Basically, just gonna talk about current status of the budget. talk about current status of the budget.
Okay. Good.
Thanks.
Annabelle, I think you're about to have your first meeting?
Yes. In about two weeks, on the twenty-ninth. So, there's nothing to report at this time.
All right. Good. Look forward to, to that committee starting, getting to go, getting going. All right. Any board member announcements? Eric?
Just briefly, I did want to mention, I was able to attend Brian McMahon's Into the Woods final production this past Saturday. You know, I, as a, as a proud member of the Norwalk Public Schools, seeing what these kids can produce, and also noting that it was their second production, there's no surprise to me when Dr. Adamowski was reporting the numbers in our participation in arts, because I sat there with my fiancee and our mouths were kind of agape at one point. I had to check my jaw, because...
The talent.
The talent, not just in what was being performed, but the set production, the everything. It's really, really exciting to watch that. And it's, you know, our arts program across the board is just an astounding thing to watch. So, wonderful little high point in my week.
Good. Any others? Heidi?
I actually stopped by last night, West Rock's Middle School, Courage to Speak. And they had their award ceremony. The mayor was there, I believe. Mike was there. Chetty was there. I'm trying to think. And a few others. And it was really quite nice to see that last night. That is it.
All right. Anything else? Sherelle?
We had, the Norwalk Public Library had our lit crawl. And the mayor was there. And it was just, it was phenomenal. I'm sorry. Somehow my Pandora came. But it was phenomenal, just to have a group of people, the people that we interact with, the people who serve the city voluntarily. Phenomenal to just celebrate literature. So, we're hoping that you guys will all join us next year.
And I will echo Sherelle on that. I was actually participating in that at the bankhouse location shortly before I ran the policy meeting. And, you know, it, it was, it was just such, it's such a fantastic event. And it was supporting Norwalk Reads, which is a wonderful nonprofit here in the city. So, thank you, Sherelle, so much, actually, for being a host at one of the locations and just being a big part of this. It's a fantastic event.
And I just want to add, Geraldo texted me, and he said, "Let's get the mayor to open up parking across the street from the library." So, Geraldo, that was my plug to you. He's, he's watching the streaming.
All right. Anything else?
That's good news.
All right. Good, good. That's a good song. All right. So, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. First set of minutes is February ninth. Is there a motion to approve? Heidi moves. Second?
I have to turn it off.
Yes.
I'm trying to turn off. Hold on. Was there, somebody sent it, Shirley sent it, I think, about...
Yes, I have that to make her corrections.
Those were the March first, correct?
Okay.
Yes. March, well, minutes of March one. I think that's the second set.
Yes. And we were approving March, I think, February nine.
Yeah, we're on February ninth. But I, I have, I'm not gonna give that to the secretary. Okay. So, we move it, move in second?
Yes.
We did. Okay. Any changes or corrections? I, I have a few. I've got these written down. I can, I'll, I'll give you what I wrote here, because most of them are little typographical corrections or whatnot. But there are a couple of things. Like, on page one, under call order, second paragraph, it said, he noted that despite the presence of a quorum, that should actually be the absence of a quorum. We got a quorum when Ms. Harris arrived. So, we had a quorum once she arrived for the rest of the presentation. And let's see. There's, on, on the second page, about almost halfway down, there's a, there's a paragraph that says, "Brian, how do we engage in the model of demand of private versus public, and what could be done for partnerships, and how the district could go forward to manage the recommendations?" Did you say something like that? Was that like you asking a question, or?
You can have it stricken from the record.
I just wasn't quite sure what it meant.
Was that hour four or five, that?
Probably hour five. How do you imagine?
Sorry, Mike. What's your, what's your page reference?
It's page two of four.
I'm not much better with mine.
So, you take a look at that. And then I had a question for Dr. Adamowski down here. This is quoting you. "He spoke on the goal of returning schools to Mobergen School rather than Magnet first requires restoration of capacity in other schools."
I don't think that's accurate.
Yeah.
You can strike that.
Okay. Why don't we take that out? If you want to, I'll just strike that statement attributed to you, Brian, if you don't care. I'm just not sure what, what it was.
I did recall it did come up in conversation. I'm just trying to remember its exact context.
The other changes are, you know, little typographical things that I give to the secretary. What do you think?
I'd leave it in. I did, I did mention.
All right. We'll leave that in. All right. So, with, with the changes known, and all in favor of adopting the minutes, indicate, I guess, all opposed. Abstentions, okay, for, because Artie wasn't there. Okay. So, the minutes are approved with those changes. I will give you the marks. And then, the second set of minutes is March one. Is there a motion to approve? So, moved by Eric, second by Artie. Any changes to these minutes? I didn't see anything myself. So, I had no changes to these. We did get two small changes from Shirley Mosby. She said on page five of sixteen, says consent calendar, motion passed unanimously, is incorrect. She said she abstained. Approval of the minutes. Her name was just spelled wrong. So, I will give you this, this also. Okay. Yes.
Correct. Bottom of page ten. And sorry, it's minor. But, just for clarity, that was Nirmac gym teacher, Mandy Fisher, and our CSD, their Shannon Roman, who were at the Rangers.
Okay.
Thanks.
That's all. All right. Okay. With those changes, all in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate. And, that's our approval. All in favor, all opposed? Abstentions?
Just one, one correction for me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Abstention for February ninth for me.
Okay.
I wasn't there.
And actually, the same for me. I just realized. I'm so sorry. Thank you, Dr. Prebaker.
All right. So, on the February ninth, these two votes are switched to abstain. Okay. All right. I'll give you those. And, the only remaining piece of business is a motion to adjourn, Mr. Kuzemis. Second by Eric. All in favor?
Yes.
And the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Gotta get back to the tradition now that you're fully operational.